Thank you. All right, we're running about three or four minutes late here, but considering the weather and some folks not here yet, we'll just proceed. We do have a quorum, and I can mention that in a moment, but so we're going to call a meeting to order. Everybody does seem to be in order. Cool. And join this three-member board in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as a rule.
Amen. All right, as I said, we do have a limited quorum here. President Pearson is not available. He's actually, I shouldn't be mentioning this, but off enjoying a vacation with his wife Cindy. And Ms. Rice, Director Rice, we haven't heard from her, but she's had death in the family, so perhaps that's the reason that she is not available today. So, counsel Carmel, legal counsel Carmel, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Vice President Farmer, we discussed labor negotiations, the CDM Smith litigation, and the performance of the general manager, but there's nothing to report.
So, as you can tell, a lot happened, but nothing to report. Thank you. All right, any deletions or additions to the agenda? Anyone have any thoughts on that? Okay, we're good. So, let's go on to public safety, and I'm noticing that Commander Nelson is not here today, so he's obviously occupied with something more important than this meeting, and that's totally understandable. So, let's move on to the Fire Chief's Report. Chief Hollingworth.
Thank you, Vice President Farmer and Board. Thank you for letting us be here today. Relatively quick report for you. For the month of September, there were 93 emergency responses in the community. We did have two fires here. We're still averaging around an 80% to 20% in regards to service delivery for local versus non-local patrons. We're having an upswing in regards to the callouts for equipment out of the area. That's the mutual aid and automatic aid service agreements we have with the state of California due to the fires that are burning in and around the area. Luckily, we have not had a significant fire, something like the chimney fire or others in the area, but we're getting called out for a lot of little things. For example, there was one that just occurred about half an hour ago down in Cayucus, burned down a couple of power poles, went into vegetation, and there's a reason to believe that's why everybody's internet just went out, because that was the main service delivery for the community. So, they believe that's the case, and they're already working on getting that rectified. As you can see outside, the weather has turned relatively hot for us today. This is kind of a unique experience for Cambria. There's usually a three or four days period in the year where we get up into the 90s, and we get that turnaround in winds. The west, the east wind comes down and blows down, so this is just a reminder that we are borderline in the red flag fire weather. We're not quite there yet. They've alerted that for Los Angeles County and Ventura Counties. And remember, that's an evaluation of a bunch of atmospheric events, including temperature, expected wind, wind direction, and relative humidity, and those all have to line up at the right time to give a actual red flag fire weather warning. However, safe practices would dictate that you may still make the right common sense choices, and if you're going to be cutting or mowing, do that very early in the day. Don't do it afternoon, and be very cognizant of how you approach and what kind of work you do in and around your home. It's not the time of year to be working on a vehicle or grinding or anything like that in any kind of a grass or any kind of product where you can move that fire around. So, just please be careful of that for the community. And lastly, we're very happy to report that we are starting our season of hope again. This is an allied cooperative agreement that we've done with KSBY for the last number of years, and that's where we, the Fire Department and also the CCSD, are able to be a receptive, primary reception center for both the Toys for Tots and then also the Food Bank. And so, we have barrels at the fire station for drop-off. They've been delivered the other day, and I'm happy to say that there's already quite a bit of stuff in there. So, it's interesting to see that that giving spirit is really prevalent this time of year, and it's a great opportunity to be able to help give it back. So, if you have the opportunity to go ahead and participate, we are a location where you could do that. And I'm over to you for any questions.
Anyone on the board have any questions? Yes, Director Stidell.
Is there any potential that we would have resources from here called out to be able to support something as far north as what's going on up in northern California?
Absolutely. This last year was a good example. We had resources all the way up in Redding during the fires there.
Okay.
Yeah, that happens every year.
Do you by chance know how things are going with that?
I haven't gotten an update as of today, but right now, the last report I got is the last fire that was in the Sonoma County area.
Right.
Was at 0% containment, and it's based on these same atmospheric conditions. So, they have a long job ahead of them in trying to maintain that. We get updates every morning, and sometimes in the afternoon, and we have yet to receive an update on that fire in Sonoma area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Don't go away. We do have one request for public comment on your report from Karen Dean. Ms. Dean.
Over the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of posts on Nextdoor about bottle rockets and fireworks being set off in the area of Fern Canyon. I just wondered if the Fire Chief had anything to update us on on that, whether they've located the people who are doing that or what the situation is.
Yes, we are aware of that. We were notified, there was about a two or three-day stretch where people were shooting fireworks off in that general area, Cardiff, Emerson, Romney, into the potentially Fern Canyon area that echoes quite a bit. There has been some product that's been found on the ground, some used spent rockets, firework material, and the Sheriff's Department has been contacted, and we've been cooperatively working in regards to some form of investigation to see if we can locate that. There has been no arrests made secondary to that yet, and we're just continuing to work the area to see if there's anything we can find. It's a good reminder to let everybody know that there is a zero tolerance policy for fireworks in the community, secondary to the fire code adoption of 16, which is what we currently have and enforce. It is completely illegal to utilize or possess any illegal fireworks or any safe fireworks in the community, and if they're found, they will be confiscated and they will be cited. So, please, again, use your due diligence and don't use those products, and if you do find somebody that would be, that's using them or you see that, please don't hesitate to call either the fire station or 911 and let us know.
Chief, I have one question of your report. The second thing you said after the 93 emergencies was two fires here in town. Could you briefly elaborate on that?
Minor vegetation fires that started on the roadway or in the creek bed, and they were put out very quickly. And when I say that small, there, you could put your arms around it, but enough to put everybody and caution and worried about it, and it just shows you, if it happens at the wrong time of the year with the wrong type of weather, it could turn into a much bigger event.
All right, Chief, thank you so much that you didn't have anything really alarming to report.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You bet. I was too, by the way, just want to welcome and acknowledge Director Rice has arrived. Thank you. So, move on to item three, public comment, and I don't know if this is an appropriate time to make this remark, but obviously, we have warmer weather than usual, and you know how it is, and we're very blessed, by the way. We should just think, considering we're in here right now, if we were outside, you know how it is with the warmer weather, we can tend to maybe get a little bit agitated, that type of thing, get a little irritated at times, but since we're in here in this much cooler building that the temperature's outside, maybe we can just have cool thoughts today and have a positive and grateful outlook on life and even on the CCSD, and that would be a real blessing. So, moving on to item number three, public comment, I just want to mention and read this. You can address, members of the community can address any items not on the agenda, board agenda today. Obviously, we can't discuss or comment on items not on the agenda, and you have up to three minutes to speak, and speaker slips. We have three so far. The speaker slips are available at the foyer out front, and you can turn them into Ms. Dodson over here. So, our first request to speak and public comment is Christine Heinrichs.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak in that spirit of grateful and positive. I am looking forward to this meeting perhaps being concluded by 5:00 today so that everyone could attend the wildlife event that will be happening over at the Unitarian Universalist Community. That's over on Arlington Street. We'll have our two local wildlife wardens from the State Department of Fish and Wildlife will be there talking about how we can live best with our wildlife residents of Cambria, and it's always good to know these people because they are the ones, if you're having any issues with wildlife, to contact, and they'll be there from 5:00 to 6:00. And in that spirit of positive and gratefulness, we'll have baby bunnies there for everyone to pet and enjoy. And then on Sunday, another event, wildlife biologist Joe Burnett will be here to talk about condors. The Ventana Wildlife Society will be releasing six more young condors into the San Simeon remote outback where they have a flight cage. And the two young interns who will be living up there in those rather straightened conditions with the birds and monitoring them, they'll be at the meeting as well. So, this is always a great event, and he's very excited. This will be more than two dozen condors that have now been released in our area. So, keep looking up because we could see them at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinrichs. If I'm not mistaken, it wasn't that long ago, and by that I mean like in our lifetime, and especially for folks that might be younger than myself, that condors were kind of on the verge of extinction, if I'm not mistaken. So, the fact that they are coming back thanks to the assistance of humanity, which is causing the problem in the first place, we can be grateful for that, something positive. The next request to speak is from Mr. Jeff Peters. Jeff, step forward, please.
Walters?
Walters, I'm sorry.
That's you.
That is you. Yeah, I just had an email from Jeff Peters earlier today. That's who was on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, thank you. Also, in the spirit of gratefulness, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I also understand that a lot of times it's not always easy because you'd always get the barrage from everybody about what's going on. With that being said, here comes the barrage. Anyway, I'm here to basically speak on the current clearing of the forest right now with the amount of clearing that was done that I thought was a bit drastic. So, the understory removal was really a removal. It wasn't really mitigated. It was eliminated, and that resulted, results in habitat loss. Also, there's no more baffled to the wind that comes through the canyon there against the road, which also can create invasive species problems because the seeding of the canyon there can now be increased, especially with the pampas crest, which has not yet been taken out despite some of the reports, which also I was heard it was going to actually be burned in order to eliminate the seeds, which I think is delightful on the one hand and frightening on the other, which everybody probably knows about because of the fire issue to begin with, which is why we used it in the first place. Sometimes these things can get out of hand. At any rate, I think that it would be a worthwhile thing to try and consider the fact that too much removal of the understory also results in habitat loss for native species, which is huge at this point. That entire canyon has been essentially hollowed out. There is no place for woodland creatures to hide or make nests like they normally do. And that is obviously a problem. Anyway, it's also an interdependent riparian ecosystem, which again, with the removal of all the plants, you also have increased evaporation, which has already occurred within the river that does naturally flow through that area, which causes the canyon in the first place. So, the evaporation has continued and is extreme at this point. Some ponds that were exposed to the sunlight, et cetera, now have evaporated since that understory problem is already, the understory was removed. So, that is another problem with the health and also water being retained for the trees and their growth, which is another problem. So, taking out understory removes water to the trees, which also compromises their health. So, obviously, I have addressed some of the erosion issues also because of taking those plants out, which increases the erosion, which the Schwartz will probably tell you about as well because they've already written a statement on that. I also would suggest that the Schwartz are more involved with it because they do run the Forest Service Committee. They've been very diligent about putting it together and taking care of the forest as best they can, and then put in huge amounts of hours and work in that and have largely been ignored, which I am very upset about because they actually do do a lot for this community to try to take care of the forest itself. So, I would like to have them actually addressed and considered when these kinds of things are going on so that the, and maybe more plans be drawn up with CAL FIRE before these things happen, and possibly even a vote taken to the community or at least discussed with the Schwartz first before any kind of mitigation of this drastic nature, especially considering Fern Canyon because I heard it was next on the list, and I think it should not be impacted in any way, shape, or form as far as the current one was done with. The other thing I would like to mention is also Roundup is being used and glyphosate are being used on the forest, which are health hazards and cause cancer and are known to cause cancer. There's a class action lawsuit against Roundup right now currently going on in the United States nationwide. It is a huge problem. Yes, Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Not used to being in this chair. I inadvertently didn't start the time clock, so I have a feeling your three minutes are up, but I want to thank you so much for a well-prepared presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the time.
You bet. Thank you. Our next request to speak is from Elizabeth Bettenhäusen, Ms. Bettenhäusen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, for recognizing my right to speak. I would like to affirm what was just said. I have lived through an apartment fire in Boston. I have lived through another fire in another residence of mine, and so I am not unaware of what fire can do, but I am dumbfounded by what's happened to the cleaning of the so-called cleaning of the forest. But I do want to say that this morning, when it was only 80 degrees, I went down to the beach and went to San Simeon, Santa Rosa Creek, and I want to say that I've been checking there for two weeks pollution of that creek, and there's something very unusual going on, and I've alerted state parks because it's in the State Park Preserve. So, I urge you to go down and look. You'll also see if it's hot again tomorrow, a great blue heron yelling at Royal Terns. It was a big ruckus because they were all too hot. But what I really want to talk about is yesterday, when I got off the school bus in the afternoon, and I get off down by Park Hill right by the ocean, which is a very nice place to get off the school bus, but there was a CCSD truck going, and I, of course, in my diligent oversight of the whole system, walked over there and talked with two excellent, excellent gentlemen who were ready to do what I didn't know happened, their monthly check of a lift station. And I, in my infinite curiosity, no humiliation intended, I asked them questions upon questions. Now, I want to say, if we had a video of that to play for the community, you would have an informed community about a whole dimension of sewage that you never had before, and you would hear people talking, hey, I didn't know that my, what I flushed down the toilet is carried by gravity. I didn't know that. And I didn't know that some of the tracks that we run the sewage through are much lower than the seawater plant, than the wastewater plant over here, and so we need some pumps, and therefore, we need electricity. And if the electricity goes, God willing, it won't with PG&E in charge, we hope that the generators will work, except we don't know for sure that they'll work because they aren't running usually on diesel and propane, and so we've got to go out every month and check all 10. And then we hire somebody to come in once a year and make sure they really are in good shape. Now, I can't recommend highly enough becoming familiar with the work of the people in the field in water and wastewater, in the forest and the other parks that CCSD is in charge of. I urge you, don't bother them too much. They were tolerant of me because we've talked before on when they were cleaning the sewer line of roots on my street, and they remembered me, and I didn't remember them, which is a whole lot that I won't elaborate on. But I urge you to ask the people who are working for you to give you what is public service. Ask them how it is because they're super. By the way, you can look at Facebook, and I posted it all with pictures. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, and that is on public comment, and that's Michael Calderwood.
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, how are you? Good to see you.
I just want to mention, Michael, don't want to take away from your time, but for some reason, it's running, so when it gets to three minutes, your time is up.
I'll be back in my back-of-the-room place before that.
Thank you.
Just an observation, last Thursday, late afternoon, I had the need to call the CCSD offices, and it appeared the phone system was down. It would go to a, you know, that annoying beeping, this number cannot be reached, cannot be as dialed. So, I tried it several times from different devices, my home phone, my computer, my cellphone because I'm a nerd, and it continued on. It continued on through Friday. I reached out again to try to contact on the blessing side. I did get to connect with Director Rice because her name came up under my contact list for CCSD. But that continued on for at least those two days, perhaps longer, I don't know. I did speak to an employee, I guess on Monday, who indicated that there was some problem early in the day, but there was not an awareness that this issue was occurring. So, my question is, A, how do you know if your phone system is down that your emergency number to contact, for anyone in the public to contact, anyone in the CCSD emergency or otherwise? And it wasn't working normally, as I understand it. It would roll over to a call center after hours, and people would then field the call. That didn't happen for at least two days. On the website, it's the only Contact Us number that's available. So, if there is another way that the public could or should reach out in a situation like this, could that be published? Is there a text number? Is there a, some other sort of fairly reasonably quick response that a community member could enjoy in a situation where it was necessary to get hold of somebody at the CCSD? And then if that is available, could you perhaps put it on the Contact Us page of the website? If it's not available, maybe consider a way to better alert yourselves if an issue exists, and then put in place a backup plan so the community can contact the organization. Thank you. Two minutes and 13 seconds left.
Thank you. That is... Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number four, the manager's report. And just to get some clarification, I actually have a request to speak on item 4A, the general manager's report. So, should we allow the public comment first, or should Mr. Weigold speak beforehand? Anybody want to advise me on that?
If he makes his report first, some of the questions they have may be answered.
That's what I figured, but I thought I would ask somebody who's been board president for two years. Thank you so much, Director Rice. So, Mr. Weigold, it's your turn. Or General Manager Weigold, pardon me.
Mr. Vice President, thank you. Very busy last month and a half for the CCSD. I'll cover, mention, or call out four issues. One is the district clerk and I attended the California Special District Association Conference in Anaheim. That was the 50th anniversary, so they had an extended program there. I listed some of the breakout sessions that I attended, which were extremely helpful to me. You know, I consider this ongoing training and a chance to network with some of the other special services district people that are experiencing some of the same issues that we are and understanding a little bit of how they're attacking those problems. Also, had a meeting with, initial meeting with San Simeon Community Services District as they've been directed to move their wastewater treatment plant, and so we had some discussions there about potentially doing things, some things together. This is very far out. We're talking 15, 20, 30 years. So, good to meet them and understand their situation and share ours. We're continuing to work with the local and region organizations on disaster preparedness plan. We're rewriting our own, and part of that is driven by the PG&E power outage plans, the PSPS shutdown program that we're already seeing up north. And so, we're about a third of the way into that. Fire chief's leading that effort. And then for two internal items I wanted to mention to increase some of our efficiencies within the admin staff, one is the, a slide I'll put up that talks about how we work with the committees and the boards to publish agendas. I don't know if we have that slide available to put up, but I'd look to the community and the board for any guidance as this is our, sort of our first cut, and I know that reading's really difficult to read there. It wasn't meant to be put up on a overhead projector, but we outlined sort of the, some of the things that have to happen from idea to being on paper on an agenda and all the items that it takes to make that happen, who has to see what, so we don't get wires crossed from ad hoc committees to subcommittees to standing committees to the board. And so, this is a way to de-conflict a lot of those issues. And so, I'd be looking for any comments anyone has on this. That would be helpful to outline our process. Additionally, we're working on the same sort of process flow for contracting. So, when we have a requirement, what is the process by which something has to proceed through our system to, until a check is in hand with a vendor? So, we're in compliance with all rules and regulations and policies that we have. Unless there are further questions, that concludes my report.
You first.
Pardon me.
Yes, of course, we do have questions from the board. Director Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weigold. I particularly like your flow chart for the committees. However, I do have one question. Between the very last two, between the third to last step and the second to last step, that is between the final agenda review and the post-agenda packet, where there is review by the, let's see, it's the final review by the district council and staff. I don't see any provision for any subsequent changes to the agenda should something be found at that point. So, how do you envision that happening? It sounds like maybe it needs to go, you need to have a slot in case it needs to come back one more time.
I think that may start back through the process again. But let me, that's a great point, and I'll, let me review that with the staff.
I believe that Director Stidell also had a comment to make.
Something I wanted to bring to the attention of the public, I think that the committee chairpersons were aware of this, but the liaisons that are listed out under the agenda creation shows, for the finance committee, that the finance manager from staff is part of that. For the INR committee, the general manager is part of that, and for the policy committee, it's District Kirk, along with the chairman and the vice chair of the... chair of the committees themselves. So I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the intent that you had voiced earlier is that those liaisons would be there during the meetings for the individual committees, and they in essence are the liaison between the committee and the staff to be able to bring things back. And I know that I've worked directly with the finance manager in that regard. But I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the folks in the public, that that is a process that's been established for working between the committees.
Yes, that's correct, that those are liaisons to each standing committee from the staff. But that doesn't mean that there couldn't be more staff at each of those meetings, depending on what the subject matter was for that particular committee.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask AGP, I noticed when Director Steidel was speaking, she was kind of off-mic, you know, looking at the general manager, but not speaking straight into the mic. Is that going to affect people being able to listen if they're going to be watching now or in the future?
Straight into the mic is good.
Okay. Apologies, thank you.
No need for apologies. Something they're wishing I wasn't talking into the microphone, so, oh, there you are.
There is one other thing, the last item preparation for the meeting, the last bullet, it says push minutes. I'm not sure if that meant something else, or it was just a typo. Is it published?
I think that we could clean that up a little bit, make it more clear.
Thank you.
Thanks for that input.
All right, I believe that completes General Manager Weigold's report. And we have a request to speak on this item from Elizabeth Bettenhäusen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I want to just ask, affirm one thing that happened down in the annual meeting of the districts association, and that is that, hello fly. And that is that all the little breakout session classes, whatever that means, included the very last item, dealing with difficult people. And I'm sure that the new general manager of the CCSD will find that very, very helpful as he continues to encounter my presence at the meetings. So I look forward to our articulation to each other of the aspects of that difficulty, and we will certainly, I'm sure, Mr. Vice President, if you pass that word along to him, we will be a little more amenable to each other's presence in the not-too-distant future. And then I want to point out something that has mystified me and made me laugh, and I hope indicate that there can be dramatic cultural change in the United States of America. And that is down under administration, where it says, "Some of the other classes attended, including new employment laws, in response to the Me Too movement." I'm afraid, dear friends, that that means the Me Too movement about sexual abuse. And that is a pertinent and germane issue in the CCSD, as we all know, and we hope that that does not continue in that fashion with a new general manager. And the tendency to use apostrophes and "its" is obvious in the next sentence, meaning very different things. But I really urge you to look into your budget, to see if you can fund, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, fund somebody to copy, edit the agenda, so that it is comprehensible to people whose only access to these meetings, for whatever reason, is the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bettenhäusen.
Director Farmer?
Yes, Director Rice.
Sorry, Vice President.
It's not a problem.
Just as a point of order, first, dealing with difficult people used to be called dealing with difficult board members. Apparently, they have expanded their course, curricula in that particular one. But as a point of order, is it possible we could turn off the fluorescent lights and turn on the chandeliers? Because I'm getting really nauseous from the flickering. If we could just take a moment to do that. I conferred with AGP, and they said the lighting would be okay for the video, if that would be acceptable.
All right. I have no problem getting up and doing it myself. Perhaps, I see the fire chief signaling, so he's going to endeavor to work on this issue. And thank you for...
Thank you very much.
I don't know of anybody that's keen on fluorescent lights, so, thank you.
I thought we were going to replace them with LEDs at some point, but I guess we didn't have the budget.
Okay, let's...
I have one thing, question for the GM.
All right. Everybody okay with this?
Yes.
Can every, can it?
Cooler.
Yes, it does. And as long, as long as us important people up here can actually read what's in front of us, we'll just keep on going.
Director Farmer?
It's a joke.
Director Farmer?
Yes, Director Howell?
I have one question for the staff. Can staff make some comment regarding Mr. Calderwood's difficulties with the phone system? I'd like to hear a little bit about that, and whether you are aware of it, and how can this be avoided in the future?
This is the first time I'm hearing about it, but I do know that we've had some issues on an ongoing basis with our, particularly with our swap over to our after-hours service, and who gets a call, and alarm system. So there's been some intermittent issues, I know, but I've got this down as an action item for sure.
All right, seeing no further comments on the general manager's report. By the way, thank you, Chief Hollingsworth, and thank you, Director Rice. Moving on to the finance manager's report, Ms. Duffield.
Thank you, Vice President Farmer, members of the board. I just want to give you a quick update on the audit. Mr. Brunner has been on site yesterday and all day today, finishing up all of the field work that's required for the audit. He thinks he, at the end of the day, will have everything that he needs, and he'll be moving on to preparing financial reports. So it is our hope that we will have a draft report available at the next finance committee meeting, which is the end of November, I believe it's the 26th of November. And providing that happens as planned, then it will be brought to the board in December, and I will have Mr. Brunner here present to give that presentation. If you have any other questions?
That's it. Anybody on the board have any questions for our finance officer? We're just, boy, no questions about money. We're just moving right along. Thank you.
I would like to commend the finance manager for doing such a good job that we do have the answers, most of the ones that we need.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. Ms. Duffield and Mr. Brunner have spent far more hours than they had anticipated on the audit, so thank you for getting us closer to being caught up. Thank you. Moving on to item number 4C, the utilities report. And of course, it's indicated, I shouldn't say of course, but it's indicated here that Mr. Altshun from the wastewater, from wastewater, the supervisor there, would be giving the report, but Mr. Green from the water and emergency water facility is giving the report today. Jim, welcome. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you for having me. I'll begin with the wastewater report. Effluent pump number two, we have two effluent pumps. Number two is our primary pump, and it moves more volume faster, and is actually a more efficient pump. So that went down, it took on a shard of wood, and so John had had that replaced, and back in working order again. They hope to go over pump number one before the wet season begins here in the next month or so. And also, collection and lift station, they had Garcia and Sons come out and repair the manhole at Main and Windsor. I think it's probably one of the main intersections there. The concrete was starting to chip around there. And not only was it an eyesore, I think it was kind of lessening its structural integrity. So both of those two majors were done for the wastewater in the month of September. Moving on to the water department, September began with meter reads, which have become increasingly difficult due to our transmitters and our batteries starting to die out in a decade-and-a-half-old meter units. They've served their duty life well, and we are currently looking, and we've taken two proposals, and we're looking into a third, and we're really doing our due diligence to see how this works well with our new billing system, which Finance is doing a fantastic job, but looking to get that integrated in soon. And again, we're taking our time looking at this. I mean, we do want to replace these sooner than the later, but it's a big purchase, and with 4,033 services, it's quite an endeavor to take on. So also, we were a little bit limited in staff, so I don't think the billing got out late, but it was a little deterred. It was just another body and myself doing some follow-up reads due to the inactivity of the meters. And along there came a leak on Artith, which we had to pothole several times for on lower Artith. So my apologies to the people that live down there. We had the street blocked off for only one lane, and traffic was difficult, so we apologized during that time. And then September 13th at 10:00 PM brought our first PSPS, our Public Safety Power Shutdown, as PG&E refers to it as. And at 10 o'clock, right on the dot, it came on. Everything performed well. I was at the wastewater plant, and from there migrated out to our distribution system, where we have three generators, four booster pumps, and everything seemed to perform fine. Our backup generator at SR3 was activated. I activated our rental generator at SR4, which began the actual water treatment there. And everything performed masterfully, until I realized that kind of our main hub of the system at Rodeo Grounds, there's a UPS, uninterrupted power supply, that had gotten, for lack of a better term, just zapped. And so I spent the next six hours running the system manually, until I could get our SCADA guy out to help me track down and figure out what the problem was. So we've got that problem fixed. Again, it was a UPS that had seen its duty life. It was 12 years old. They're usually rated at a duty cycle or duty lifetime of about 10 years. So again, it had performed well, and it has been replaced. So we almost survived with, you know, intact our first PSPS. Stewart Street Tanks, at the end of September, we had, every five years, Division of Drinking Water wants you to go, you do a tank dive. So you have, we pay someone to come out. It's Will Bellis, who's done most of the tanks for the county and the entire county. And he dove down. There were some repairs that were done five years ago. They're still intact and in holding, but it is having some issues. So again, we're looking at perhaps upgrading them in the future, and some capital improvement planning will begin going forward on that. Also, one of our major reports was due on the month of September, and that was our water loss audit. And I won't go into details on it, but you can read in the staff report some of the percentages as compared to years before, we're happy to see. I've also prepared, another hot topic was leaks over the month of September. As we get hotter, like we are today, the ground starts to dry up and shrink a little bit, and our HDPE service lines tend to rub against the native soil. Again, probably 80% of our installs here were through boring. So they just took a line and bored a one-inch diameter hole, straight from the main to where we put the meter. When you bore through the dirt, there is native rock, river rock, and even around rock over the course of 30, 40 years, water flowing through a pipe is moving, and that constant friction will establish a pinhole, or sometimes even a slice, which can give a very small leak, and it takes perhaps a little while, but will eventually rear and surface in daylight, and that's when we jump into action and begin our repair. So there's several areas to leak repair, so if I could begin the slides. Okay, so this begins with water department after-hours leak response, but this is just more of our train of thought for leak response in general. So we received all our notification, which is maybe by word of mouth. Some people are friends with our locals here who are water staff, and they get personal calls on their cell phone, or we get emails, or the service calls us. So we respond to that, and we do a visual inspection. Usually, at least one operator, if not two, go out and verify. And we verify whether it's on what we call the customer side, so if it's after the meter and it's on the ratepayer side, we definitely inform those who are there. If there's no one home, we try and have the office make a call, letting them know. We always leave a door hanger on if there's no one home, informing them that we shut this off at this and this time. We record the meter reading at that time, so we can reference that in future. But I definitely want to make a market point that we do shut off the service. So if anyone comes home to their house and their water is off, perhaps, and their door hanger blows off, it was probably, we shut it off, so that way, you know, we wouldn't lose hundreds, or thousands, or tens of thousands of gallons, and, you know, the homeowner would be responsible for that. Next, if it's on the utility side, we kind of estimate different ways of how we attack that. If it's close enough in the dirt, or close enough to the meter box, it's usually a one-person leak, and we can fairly enough handle that right then and there. We have parked on our trucks, and we'll deal with that right there. But we'll get into, next is larger leaks. So there's some factors or metrics that weigh into this. Flow rate, and the following slide will indicate flow rate is from zero to five and so forth on gallons. Flow rates in small, medium, or large rate of loss. We always try and take, this is our forefront here. This is what we're trained to do. Our staff is great. I thank Elizabeth Bettenhäusen for complimenting wastewater staff before. It's nice to hear that, and our water staff. So anytime we have a leak, we want to solve it right then and there. But that's not always the case. If it's bubbling up in the middle of the road, and it's 20 feet from a meter and 10 feet from the main, we can't just start punching a hole in the ground and shut down traffic. We have to call 811 or USA DIG. We have to have the other utilities, or Utility Quest, a subcontractor for those companies, come out and indicate where those other lines are. The last thing we want to do is hit a PG&E line, or a gas line, or God forbid, I don't think we have any, but a fiber optics line. When I was an early operator, early on, I saw a fiber optics guy out in the field, and I said, "Oh, what are you doing?" And he said, "I'm a fiber optics guy, and, you know, I'm putting this back together," and so forth. I go, "Gosh, whatever happens if you hit one of those lines?" He goes, "I don't care how big your company is, it will bankrupt you in about an hour." So, so along those lines, we do have to call and have our lines dig. We can't just start, hate to use the term, but going cowboy and start punching holes and trying to find our leak. So at that point, we start isolating the location, and that leads to an interruption in service. So we have to start notifying the people on that street and location. And the way our valves are situated, the way they install this, sometimes it's not just a street, it's streets and blocks. And so we hate to do that, because then firing back up the system and charging the system again creates turbidity in the water and can do more damage to a pipe than if we had just let that couple thousand gallons leak. Also, it depends on time of day and available staffing. You know, if it's on a weekend or at midnight, it's probably not the safest time to start digging, or if we don't have enough staff, it can be kind of a safety-conscious realm where one person's not going to start shoveling eight feet down into a hole by himself and try and take that on. And then we got to consider, again, how many customers will be impacted by that. And then hopefully, when, if we do have to isolate, I don't know if you guys remember back in July when we had the, I think it was actually May when we did the Burton service upgrade, and it got a little out of control there, because we couldn't isolate it. Our valves didn't work. So again, we've purchased a valve exercising machine, and we're beginning next month exercising our 697 valves that are in the system. It's actually in our permit to do it annually, so that will commence next month. So I'll take any questions, or anything the board has? Oh, sorry. Okay, we'll get on to leak intensity here. Small leaks, one to five gallons, even over a 24-hour period, I mean, a gallon a minute, 1,500 gallons in a day, 1,440 minutes in the day. The cost of that isn't really worth calling in people on overtime or in the middle of the night. And so unfortunately, we'll get to that as soon as we can. But some of the larger leaks, as we get up to the 10 to 20 gallon per minute, that requires immediate response, where we can hopefully call in an emergency mark or locate, or... response, where we can hopefully call in an emergency mark or locate, or then we begin to isolate that street and inform customers of an interruption. And then our large leaks at 25 gallons a minute, that's when, no matter what time of day or night it is, I'm starting to call in my emergency crew. We're starting to isolate tanks so we don't completely drain, you know, millions of gallons. And, or the flooding and the sheet flow that comes off would start to inundate or take over a people's landscape. And, you know, we're either up a hill or down a hill here in Cambria, and we hate for that sheet flow to go in and flow into someone's garage or house and, you know, start doing structural damage or physical damage to property. That's all I have. And also put outside, kind of a show-and-tell thing, some of the different things that we found in the system. There's some saddles that go around mains that have been corroded. There's also a nice little symbiotic relationship between a digger pine taking over one of our HDPE lines, which unfortunately, we've found quite more frequently lately. Probably in the last month, we've had at least six of these incidences. So maybe as we get closer to next spring, when it's planting time, I'd like to give a little, maybe class or, you know, instructional about where your utilities are. I mean, it affects not only water, but any utility. I mean, obviously, roots of trees and so forth, they're going to try and find water and locate, and they're really good at it, digger pines and redwoods. So, yeah. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments of Mr. Green?
It wasn't so much a comment, as I was just dumbfounded by the pictures in the presentation, the copies that you have out in front of, I guess, I don't know whether that's a digger pine or not, but the displacement on that manhole and the way that it ended up being pushed out just by the root system of the tree, which looks like it probably, the one root that you had to go after, it looks like with a chainsaw, it had to be a good six inches.
Yes.
And that's, I, I'm dumbfounded by it. That's all I can say, that the potential for damage is so great, and the, your ability to be able to respond to those things and resolve them and take care of them is very much appreciated.
Great, thank you. Yes, Director Rice?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I've been interested in water resources for many years, even before I was on the board, and I learned some new things today. So I'm sure the community who gets to see this meeting will also kind of understand the process better, and it's very much appreciated. I'm looking forward to having you come back and talk about planting and the roots issue, because I think that that's also important. We had scheduled probably four or five years ago now to video the collection system, and I know we only got a little ways through that, probably, I think, 20% or something. And then we kind of had to put it on hold for reasons that are probably obvious to a lot of people. But do we have that scheduled to go forward again, so that when the collection system has these intrusions of roots, we can address it?
I believe so. I think that John is in getting proposals for a new camera system, so that way, yeah, something much more accurate and up-to-date, like best available technology that we have. So yeah, we can kind of preact to some of these things instead of react to failures in our systems.
Thank you so much for the work you guys are doing out there in the field. It's important. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Director Howe?
Just a couple of questions. Excellent report, thank you. And I would hope maybe the wonderful display that you have in the foyer, if there were some place at the district office where that display could be maintained for people who come in to pay their bills, I think it might be very useful for them to see the state of our system.
I've got a room full of those archaeology things, so yeah.
A quick question, though. When you refer to manual operation of the pump station, I had vision of you sitting there and cranking. Is that?
As funny as that sounds, no. So there's a manual throw switch that's literally a 65 PSI. So to throw that to engage our generator at our Santa Rosa well site three, it's taking all a couple hundred pounds of me and jamming that down to initiate that. It makes quite a pop, and especially at midnight when it's just quiet. And it was a full moon that night. I think it was a harvest moon weekend, so it was, you know, a beautiful night to throw that. I almost felt bad, because that old generator fires up, and it's loud as heck. But yeah, it is literally like a manual, there's no cranking. It's like no willies. But yeah, it's, it takes a little bit of elbow grease, but yeah.
I could see some poor souls sitting out there all night, you know. Just a couple of other just questions about some of the reports. On the, the September production, the little thing there where you're showing some of the SR3, there's three occasions where the SR3 was used, but said not into the distribution system. I was just curious about that.
So we have two 10,000-gallon backwash tanks. So every time, before we initiate production on the SR3 wells, it goes into backwash mode. So that's, it's filter media that we're backwashing and cleaning before we then filter it for product water. So we haven't used SR3 all year, just due to the raw water quality there from the Santa Rosa River, from Santa Rosa stream coming through there. So we're attempting to get that back up and running. So it's been kind of problematic. So we're getting all of our analyzers and equipment to make sure that, I mean, this is for compliance issues. So this is, the product water, I mean, we're more than concerned about, given to the public, it's healthy and true, and that the analytics that we're reading are accurate, because that all goes to the state. And of course, that has my name on it, so I want to make particularly sure that it's accurate, and in case that is, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Jim, I have a couple of questions. First off, that power outage that took place that--
The PSPS.
Right, the PSPS, pardon me. That everything seemed to work well, except that particular issue that you're talking about. It was like at 10 o'clock at night. So normally, you would have been at home, and would have had to respond. But because you knew ahead of time this was going to happen, were you on-site just to make sure that everything was okay?
I was that night. I was, yeah. I took over call duty that weekend specifically to be there to make sure and just ensure that everything was working correctly. I mean, we've worked really hard to get our SCADA and all these other things in place, so it's just kind of, let's see what happens, and that's what happened, so. But yeah, everything else worked flawlessly. All the backup generators, everything else worked very good. On another generator note, I know this hasn't to do with September, but, and we will take delivery of our new generator for the San Simeon well field the first week of November, and we will begin installation of that, too.
So I just want to ask you one more thing about, here the expenditure report, FAMCOM Pipe and Supply. So I think one of the things that you just mentioned with regard to this wrench, people think, hey, you go down to the hardware store, you get a wrench, right?
Right.
And I'm looking at the cost here, which is just under $5,500. So obviously, this is a pretty complicated piece of machinery, right?
It is indeed, yeah. So it's, it's an impact drill, because some of our valves are old, and they take that hammer drill to initiate spinning them. And so it counts turns on and off, so that way we can register that this valve is actually performing. So valves are your size times three plus three. So, you know, you have a six-inch valve, it's 18 plus three, 21 turns. So this counts the turns to make sure that that valve is performing correctly within. It's a gate valve, so it's sliding up and down, so it takes so many revolutions to open, obviously so many revolutions to close. To know that that valve is working correctly, those have to have the same on and off as far as revolutions. So that's our way of verifying that also.
I also want to ask you with regard to the same contractor, or vendor, I guess you would say. You have two items here with regard to mag meters. One of them is, one of them is over $7,000, and the other one is like over $4,000. Perhaps, this is just for letting the community know how their money is being spent in a very productive way. Could you just briefly tell us what a mag meter is?
Yeah, and so it's a magnetic flow meter. So obviously, there's current in water. So it, instead of like your manual displacement meters that are magnetic, and every time it goes around, the register clicks over, you know, to one, to two, this magnetically calculates the flow. The meters that we had were old. They hadn't been calibrated in recent years, and the, as you can imagine why, Division of Drinking Water and our Division that wants accurate diversion totals or production totals, to know how much we're actually pulling out of the ground. So again, they had served their time well, and they needed to be replaced. And the ones that we put in are SCADA-ready, so they're more applicable to the new type of SCADA that we're putting in, as the others wouldn't co-work with the other, with our new SCADA system that we're installing. So they were old and probably not accurate, and not going to work with our new SCADA system.
And one more brief comment. I don't know if you can answer this, but I was hoping that John Alchen would be here today, but I'm grateful you are to give us this very thoughtful report. I was just wondering, it's been about six months or so since the influence screen was, has been installed at the wastewater plant, and I'm wondering if you have any idea, if you and he have talked about how much that has improved the operation at the sewer plant?
I know, I can't describe in detail, but I know he's extremely happy that that's in place and working. Also, the PSPS, he did suffer kind of a whoa. His RAS system, which is, I think, his return activated sludge system, got zapped by that PSPS, too. So they're operating it manually also. So that's in hand. So every time they need to, you know, process, they have to go turn that on manually, so.
All right, thank you, Jim. Stick around. We have one request to speak on this particular item. Ms. Ben-Halten?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. And I thank you especially for raising the question on page 42 about that expenditure, because the total was around $21,000, and I had not the vaguest idea what a mag meter was. And then I looked it up and saw that it's a magnetic flow meter, which helped me understand it perhaps 1% better. I'm very grateful for the response from Mr. Green right now about what that is. I do have one more question. What is the location of the mag meters in this water distribution system? Where are they? Are they at the wellheads? Are they along the way in the pipe system? So I'm curious, how many mag meters do we have, and have, what proportion of them have been replaced? And so I understand now what those expenditures are, and they certainly seem reasonable. And as soon as the deliberation about assets continues in the Resources and Standing Committee, Standing Committee, and we have a whole list of that, we'll know what we can do in the near future and distant future, and must do, in order to make sure we have adequate mag meters in the system. But I raised the question in part now, again, because I just heard that calculates the flow and the diversion production totals are more accurate if you have now the new mag meter with the SCADA system. Well, one of my major concerns, and I shock absolutely nobody by saying what I'm now going to say, is how much diversion is there from customer meter leak, from mag meter leak? I want, I've said to you, dear board, dear Mr. Vice President, and share it with the board, please, many, many times in writing, I would like to see a written-out reason why we should get the new meters. I want to see if there are data to defend the claim that if we get new meters, we will have a lower loss rate. But I've said this to you before, please don't take too many notes, because I'll email you again, along with Mr. Green, because I really am grateful for the degree of specificity to which he reports. And I hope that the entire CCSD staff will look at that specificity and depth of analysis, and use that in their reports as well as the utilities people do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Green, would you like to respond at all?
Yeah, in response to that. So how many mag meters do we have? We have one basically at the wellhead. They're in different, I don't want to get lost in the weeds or get too technical on this, but they can only be within so many feet of a 90, either coming in or going out. But they're usually at the wellhead before our treatment process. So coming directly off of, we have vertical turbine pumps instead of submersible pumps. So you have to have a minimum of 18 inches away from the effluent of that, which is the outfall of that pipe. So we have Santa Rosa three and four, and then San Simeon one, two, and three. So we have five magnetic flow meters in our system. So I think that answers the how many and where. And the meter accuracy as far as meters in the ground, customer meters, we can send in our meters to be bench-tested at any time. We have one that I sent in, there's Badger National Meter. They're based out of Colorado. They have a bench testing slash calibration facility in Colorado. It's not inexpensive, however, I don't think it's too expensive if you ever want to question it. But it costs the consumer or the ratepayer about $125 to have it sent out and verified. I have one out right now. It's probably arrived in Colorado. I should get the results from that, and then I can, I think I can ask, or answer that question with more accuracy. It's just known for as long as I've been in the water agents industry for all these years, that as meters get older, they become less accurate in the favor of the consumer. And how less accurate? Well, this will be a great telltale example. It'll only be one, but at least it'll give us a percentage. It's anywhere between 0.25% and 1%. So it's not a huge inaccuracy, but when you multiply that over 4,033, I think you can get the gist. So, yeah.
Vice President Farmer?
Yes, Director Rice?
I know when, when the meters were replaced in the early 2000s, there had been, they did it kind of almost all at once, but sequentially. And there was supposed to be a program then put in place that would, it would be essentially like how they paint the Golden Gate Bridge. You get to the end of one, and you start over again. And I know that that fell off the radar for sure in 2014 with the drought, but it wasn't even on the radar prior to when I was elected. And so I think it's important, it is going to be expensive, and if we can stage it, that would be great. If we can't, we can't, because it's been, this is a very corrosive air right here by the ocean, and so it does tend to create corrosion in the circuits, and the batteries die. And I believe that the batteries are part of it, so you can't just replace the battery, if I'm remembering correctly about the meters, the customer pair.
You could have. However, those meters have become obsolete, starting back in 2015. So at the end of 2017, National Meter, they were obsolete, so they had their last remaining parts, and that would have been the last time that we could have purchased additional. And that wasn't performed at that time, unfortunately. But I don't think they would have had enough to, I mean, we're in the neighborhood of like 300-plus right now that are failing, that we're reading manually. So, yeah. And stray electric current is a thing. It is, not only the salinity in the soil and the air, but you can see it, some of the saddles that go around the main, I have two outside there, and that is from stray electrical current corroding that metal, and that's under the ground, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, you can, if you're going to maybe stick around for just a couple of minutes. All right, thank you. So I think no more, no further comments with Mr. Green's report?
As a secondary piece of information, if I remember correctly, when you were providing that information to the Infrastructure and Resources Committee, or the RNAI Committee, you had indicated that you were experiencing over billing period, a two-month period, approximately 20 additional that were failing?
Minimum 20, probably closer to 40 or 50 that are beginning to fail.
So easily, within a year, we would be 400-plus of meters?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, which would be almost 10% of our system. And Director Rice, when we'd go to replace these meters, we'd start with the failed meters, and then implement, you know, kind of a regional installation of these. But we would definitely start with those failing 300-plus first.
All right, thank you, Jim. Like I said, I'll have a quick question to ask you here in just a couple of minutes, okay? Thank you. Now we're going to move on to item five, Board Member, Committee, and Liaison Reports. And the first one that's listed is the President's Report. And since the President isn't here, I guess I'll give a Vice President's Report, if no one minds. So I just want to briefly follow up on General Manager Weigold's remarks about the meeting between staff and San Simeon, as well as here in Cambria back on October 11th, with regard to-- --between the two communities. And General Manager Weigold commented on-- And General Manager Weigold commented on, you know, a couple of things with regard to, it's probably going to take up to 15 years to go through the permitting process to approve this project if in fact it does happen. President Pearson suggested at some point we needed to do a study to determine what the best location would be for that plant. Now, the important part of the discussion, from what I observed, was Cambria using San Simeon's ocean outfall at their wastewater plant to dispose of the brine from our emergency water facility. So before I ask Jim, I mean, and I think this was also brought up before, doing piping from, doing piping from the north end of Moonstone Beach Drive up to the wastewater plant in San Simeon, which would be a little over two and a half miles. And I believe Jim had said that this would be about $1 million a mile, and what would be happening is we'd be sending our brine from our water facility to San Simeon, they would be sending our, their effluent to us. So what I wanted to ask you, Jim, and you could just get up and elaborate, because I know this has been an issue with regard to brine, especially the empowerment basin that we had out at the facility and the problems that that caused. So when, you know, right now, the plant is not in operation, so no brine is being produced. But what happens if seasonally, in the future, if that does take place, how much brine is going to be produced that we would be piping up to San Simeon?
Well, first of all, I don't want to anywhere near imply that our WDR or that Regional Water Board would let us do that. Obviously, that would take a, you know, an environmental impact report and several other things. Comment on their outfall too, is what they term shallow outfall. It only goes 800 feet. I mean, that was put in decades ago where that was the norm. Now, the norm is minimum 5280, so that's a mile, so that's 5,280 feet out there. Monterey, the Paharo Basin, which has had seawater intrusion since the early 2000s, they had, or they have permitted an outfall there, but their outfall goes 15,000 feet out past the marine sanctuary. So to get back to answer your question on how much brine we'd permit, a minimum of 6,500 gallons a day would be permitted. And that's a short run. Again, during eight-hour run, you'd still have an hour or so of backwashing and other instrument prepared. But in longer runs, that could be up to, what I've calculated out to be 19,200 gallons of brine or discharge produced over a single day run. And that's closer to an eight-plus or 10-hour mark.
I appreciate you bringing us those figures so people can kind of digest exactly the impact that it would be on the environment. So thank you. So I just, I just want to briefly follow up on what Jim just said there. Also want to make one more comment. At the meeting that took place, I do want to say that both General Manager Weigold and President Pearson were enthusiastically on board with getting the blessings from the Coastal Commission on this particular project with regard to the piping. So I just want to also say that Mr. Weigold said that he was going to follow up, connect with Supervisor Gibson, so we could perhaps have a meeting with Coastal Commission staff on this item. So I just want to make a comment, you know, my observations, and I think Mr. Green has already remarked on this, the ocean outfall up there in San Simeon, which is approved many, many years ago, that's why it's still allowed to operate. It's located inside, I'm sure many of you in the audience here and at home know that it's located inside both the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary as well as the recently declared by recent, I mean, within the last 10 years. The Cambria State Marine Park, which is the state first park of its kind anywhere, especially here in California. So like I said, the environmental concerns affecting the health of the oceans could actually prevent this project ever moving forward. So I just wanted to throw that in there, so. Do you have any comments in that regard, Jim? Any more than you already have?
None further. I'm not really an expert on ocean outfalls. I've done a little studying over the years about it. There, I mean, obviously, there's some potentially harmful effects, but there's also some positive effects from ocean outfall. I think initial studies in the 80s were contributing to some sea life and so forth, but obviously later studies have, you know, proved that incorrect, but it would be nice if that we could operate the plant and use that outfall.
All right. All right, thank you, Jim.
Vice President Farmer?
Oh, yes, excuse me, I'm sorry, Director Rice.
I'm sorry, I just had a quick follow-up. So you said there's a certain number of gallons of brine from running the plant. How much product water would we be getting for that amount of brine?
Product water we'd make
Approximate.
Approximate. And so it'd be essentially three-quarters of a million gallons a day, and that would produce that 19,000 mark.
Okay. And then I also wanted to put in the thought that this is also super at the concept level and we're nowhere near even being able to define a project to look at what the environmental impacts would be, and an EIR would be required in addition to cooperation with NOAA for the marine sanctuary, with the Division of Drinking Water, with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, with the Department of Water Resources, with Fish and Wildlife, there's, and not to mention San Simeon CSD. So there's a lot of agencies involved in this, is the talks, I believe, I was not at that talk, but the talks when I was president and as I have been attending those San Simeon CSD meetings are at the very high concept level to try and figure out if there is a project that would be advantageous for both communities and for the environment as a whole. So I just wanted to make sure that people don't think that we're moving forward on some kind of project. We don't even have much of an idea beyond a vague concept of what the benefits we'd like to see out of it and the benefits San Simeon needs to see out of it for something to work. So I just don't want the community to think that we're rushing for more. We're trying to figure out if there is something that's possible.
Thank you, Director Rice. I do want to make a comment that Director Rice has not only been on this board the longest, sneaking up on seven years now, but has been, has been involved in this particular issue for a while, even when she was just a member of the public. So thank you, Director Rice, and thank you, Jim.
I have one more question.
Oh, yes, Director Howell?
Yes. In terms of, again, talking about the possible regional solution, considering the current capacity of our sewer plant, is it your opinion that we have sufficient excess capacity that we could without additional increasing ours? What I'm asking, I guess, is do we have the capacity?
We could take on San Simeon CSD right now. Yeah. Their flows are 70,000 daily. Our summer flows are sometimes not enough to even operate the plant. We have, when you don't have enough flow, there's some operating woes that come with it, just like if you have too much flow. And we're kind of on our happy medium at about a million gallons treated a day, and we're about half a million. So taking on another 70,000, you know, wouldn't be hardly anything for us, and it would probably assist in our summertime flows. Yeah. And wintertime flows would be an extra 200,000 gallons, because like our system, their system has some intrusion. There's some areas of improvement right there where they get some winter flows that end up in the sewer, which instead of, you know, getting diverted along the swaleways and, you know, going to other drainage areas. So there's some improvement on their side there, but we could absolutely take on their winter and summer flows.
Thank you, Jim. I moved ahead to Item 5 and overlooked a request for, to speak on Item 4C, which is the Utilities Report from Christine Heinrichs. And we kind of were quasi still in the Utilities Report, I guess, in some fashion. So, Ms. Heinrichs.
Yes. Thank you for bringing up those points about the environment, and thank Director Rice for all those agencies that would have to be involved. This is, to me, another fanciful magic solution to Cambria's water problems. The possibility that this would ever be approved is remote, and it would certainly be fought all along the way. I really implore the board not to pursue this to the exhaustion of our finances and our spirit and the pursuit of actual real solutions. We have visited, my husband and I have visited several wastewater treatment plants that are now using constructed wetlands, which are cost about a tenth of the industrial wastewater treatment plants. They, Cambria seems an ideal position for those. I ask you to please explore those solutions before you look to these elaborate industrial 20th-century hyper-technical solutions. The Coastal Commission shows absolutely no sign of giving permission to any further ocean outfalls. They were very specific with the Cayucus outfall in adding the condition that no other agency would be allowed to use that temporary ocean outfall that has been permitted in Cayucus. The ocean outfall in San Simeon is obviously part of what the Coastal Commission wants to see removed. Anything can happen in politics, but it's very difficult for me to imagine a day when NOAA and the Coastal Commission would permit the ocean to continue to be used as a sewer for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinrichs. Moving on to
Excuse me?
Oh, pardon me, Director Steidel.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Director Rice for providing a summary position, somewhat in juxtaposition of the opinion that was previously put forward by the board members. Member. I hate to think that as a board, we're not thinking about the community as a whole. And I appreciate the personal preference and position of the idea that was expressed about not moving forward in any way with anything. But we also have to keep an open mind as to at least consider things. And fine, if it doesn't work and if the options don't allow us to be able to pursue something, then we will have at least looked at it. We will at least considered it. And to continuously reject without consideration, I think, is a limitation and does a disservice to our community.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Steidel. I just want to make one, one brief, more brief comment from the President's Report before we move on to the Finance Committee Report. And that is something that I've just become aware of, a gathering that's going to be taking place over in Yosemite early next month, Tuesday through Friday, November 5th through the 8th. And it's called Localizing California Waters. And if I can read this here, it's looking towards an outcome of innovative solutions to local and global climate challenges by advancing local water policy and enacting best water management practices. So at this point, we're trying to, some of us that are on the Resources and Infrastructure Committee are unavailable to attend. We're hoping to get one member of the committee to, who has volunteered to go over there to shore up his personal schedule so he can do that. So we're hoping to have someone go there and get a report, especially where certain forward-looking technologies, so to speak, would be applicable, or forward-looking millennial technologies, so to speak, could be used here in Cambria. Thank you. So, yes, Director Howell?
Just to follow up on Director Steidel's comment, that we, the board should be encouraging examination of all possibilities that might solve some of our problems. And in that spirit, I would, this is just unofficial on my own part, but I would appreciate perhaps the RNI Committee looking at, in addition to exploring what's already been discussed, looking at the possibility of constructed wetlands as a possible way in terms of going forward. It has certainly been demonstrated to work in other communities. But we shouldn't take anything off the table. I think the issue is, and perhaps being creative, and that is a solution that, and I think it would be legitimate for RNI to start looking at that as a possibility.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's one of the items I was considering for next month's agenda is perhaps, or putting, let's say, putting on, well, future agenda items here, and we'll discuss that in future agenda items with regard to the RNI Committee. So moving forward to Board Member and Committee and Liaison Reports, we now have a report from Director Steidel and the Finance Committee.
Most of the actions from the Finance Committee were review in nature, the consideration of future agenda items, the anticipation of being able to review the audit report information. We did get an update status from Finance Manager Pam Duffield at the time, and so as she had mentioned earlier in the proceedings today, that is going to be hopefully coming to us for review at the end of November by the committee and then forwarded for the board information in December. Thank you.
Thank you. That was brief, and thank you so much for that, and to the point as well. Director Howell, do you have a report from policy? I see there's something of, some length here in the agenda packet.
Yes, and I will, it's there written so that the board and the community, those who are interested, can get a more full report about the, what the Policy Committee is doing and how it is proposing to go forward. So I won't read the report here, but the reason it's in here is that in the past, I've basically given verbal reports, and in this case, I was afraid that perhaps some things were getting left off. So what this is, and you will see incarnations of this in future reports as well, because it proposes to be a continuous record of what this committee has been doing. It's because we've continually looking at policies and passing them forward, it's possible to lose track as to what's, what policy is on whose plate. So I do encourage the board at your, in your copious free time, if you would take a moment to look at that. It's not necessary today. And similarly, for those of you in the public, this is in the agenda packet online, and if you're wondering what the Policy Committee's been doing, I do recommend that you take a look at that. In response to a request from Director Rice, you will notice, however, at the end of the report, I have included the table of contents for the CSDA sample policy handbook. So this shows you the scope of what we're doing. And it's just a framework that was decided upon. The initial discussions, which I weren't, was not party to, it seemed that the committee was concerned that they did not want to be perceived as cherry-picking policies. So in the way of avoiding that was to decide on a framework and then just proceed in an orderly fashion, with the understanding that some things might be brought forward to the Policy Committee that would be outside that particular frame of work, but this at least would give us something to go forward with. So I encourage, again, that it's a rather broad, it shows a very broad scope, and it's quite possible that many of these policies may not be germane, but it does give us a, something of a checklist that we can then look to see if there are perhaps things that perhaps where we don't have a policy that we should have, or there may be policies that need to be updated. Also, if you'll, the last attachment, which is on the last, it's page 38 of your packet, is a survey of two of the sections of the manual, the general section and the one regarding the board, indicating which policies are currently, that the board does have and where there are also lacune, you know. So that's, and this is basically what the committee has been working through, and I've also included a little code to indicate which policies have been passed to the board and which ones the board has acted upon. So that is the, the committee is open, wants to receive guidance from the board. This may not be the right forum at this moment, but there will be some policies coming forward to you at our next meeting. And at that time, perhaps it might be appropriate for the board to also be thinking about the direction the Policy Committee is going and perhaps give us some guidance. One issue that I see of some concern is One issue that I see of some concern is you have policies and you have procedures. There's a certain relationship between them, and it, it, it's a rather fuzzy line as to where that is. My personal belief is that while operational procedures are in fact under the purview of the management of the district, our highly qualified manager that we've, nevertheless, there may be areas of procedure that are still worthy of examination in any case, if for no other reason than for to determine that the procedures are in fact in line with the policies. So it is not, in my opinion, out of the committee's purview to at least be looking at procedures. Whether they should be dictating procedures is an entirely different question. So that's just my summary, and I have to say I'm very appreciative of the, of the work of this committee. It's, in some regards, it's, it's, the Infrastructure Committee is dealing with concrete things, and that's a certain, and it can be very satisfying. You have a pipe and you can see it. And Finance Committee, you have nice columns of figures and numbers. Again, it's, it's rather concrete. This area where we're dealing with in policies is, is quite a different animal, and so it takes a somewhat different approach. So I just wanted to say that. And then I've asked the Vice Chair, Gordon, if there's any additional things that maybe you'd feel like you'd like to say to the board at this point and to the public regarding our, our work. This is Gordon Heinrichs, the Vice Chair of the Policy Committee.
Well, thank you very much. What you've mentioned is a very good summary of what we've been doing, and the list that you put together, I've gone through that, and it highlights all those activities that has came forth, even from Director Rice's time input and moved them forward as appropriate. The only thing that I would think that you mentioned sort of is when we present those for the board approval, and there is not agreement at that particular policy, that the feedback somehow gets recirculated with another nomenclature, that board is reviewed or something, and it goes back to our committee. And we could have an idea that this still needs to be worked on by the committee and what those suggestions might be. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, Director Steidell?
I, the listing of the, the policies and their status, I think, is, is excellent. It provides an immediacy and a reference point, and it helps the community see the, the progress through the actions and activities that you've produced. My only question has to do with the designations currently, the, the, the advance to the board, 15, 20, and 25. Those were looked at by the board and then were going to be returned to look at, and then apparently there are three more that the committee is ready to advance to the board, 30, 35, and 40. So just to get a mindset, are, will we be looking at six policies the next time? You, you had indicated that you'd be coming to the board the next time, and so I'm just trying to get a feel for what it is potentially we'll need to be looking at.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Vice President, to respond. The three, the 15, 20, and 25, as Board Secretary, Board Staff, Communications, and Claims Against the District, actually, yes, this is a little bit, I haven't really quite refined this system quite enough. Those, those, the board has actually, they are actually in front of the board, but the board hasn't really discussed them. So as...
They ta, they tabled them for return to the committee.
Those have not been returned to the committee. Yeah.
Ah. Thank you.
Yeah. However, the other three, the next three on there, and I guess this is where the, the system is, is failing, is the, those you have not seen yet.
Right.
So there's some that will be on next, and...
Okay, so those are the three that you're expecting that we'll take a look at?
Yeah. So in other words, there's three that we're awaiting feedback from the board, and there's three that are going to be new to the board.
Okay.
Plus a few others that we've thrown in that I'm not...
Ah, just for fun.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to make a brief comment on the lighting, and thank you Director Rice for suggesting that we turn off the fluorescents. So instead of the fluorescent lights, we are, although there are still some on in the back, but, so we have the little candlelight bulb, little candlelight bulbs, and natural sunlight coming into this room. What a concept. And perhaps we'll consider doing that in the future if, if so inclined.
As long as it's daylight.
As long as it's daylight. Well, yeah, hopefully the meetings will all end while it's still daylight. All right, moving forward now, I guess, hopefully it's forward. So now we're having the Resources and Infrastructure Committee report, and so I guess that's myself as Chair, the recent Chair of that particular committee. So we were, first, the, first thing we did was briefly discuss CIP projects for water and wastewater, and how we had to, at one point, reallocate funds from this SCADA, the Water Department of SCADA, to replace a wellsite generator that was not functioning. I don't want to get into what was happening, how we used funds for, for wastewater, because I have so much more to do. We had two committees give us final reports on what it was they had been researching for months. So first, I want to briefly comment on the, the committee of Karen Dean, Brad Fowles, and especially Tom Gray, and their research on Cambria's water demand and past and present water usage. And this went back over 40 years. And one of the things that was interesting, and it's not surprising, is that back in the late 70s and late 80s, when we actually had drought conditions at that time, similar responses from the residents in the community took place, as happened in 2014 and 2015, or 2013 through 2015, where there was a drastic cutback on water usage. And then there's like this slow increase in water, water usage taking place as time moves on, and we are giving an adequate supply of water thanks to Mother Nature deciding to grace us with rainfall. But what was interesting, one of the things that I found interesting was that even as population increased, and it's gone up about 1,000, let's say in the last 30 years or so, water demand and water usage has actually decreased. So we have, I don't know if you'd want to say a more enlightened community usage of water, but I guess I would describe it as that. So one of the, one of the problems that has taken place is that, so we wound up having a good idea of past water usage and trends, but unfortunately, there's a lack of accurate data as we are presently and recently dealing with. We don't have any data on retrofits since 2013. We don't have accurate data regarding occupied and unoccupied dwellings, especially regarding vacation rentals and Airbnbs. So there are limits on the, both the quality and the quantity of the data, so we can't necessarily accurately predict future demands. But there's still a lot of information in this particular 10-page document that I think would be relevant and people would like to take a look at. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Dotson, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong here, we can have this report available at the district website for people to just take an overview of? Cool, thank you. Also, we wish to thank commi, oh, excuse me, our Vice Chair, Ms. Dean, who was on this committee, is in the audience. Did you wish to add anything further, Karen? She has, she moved slightly and then she said no, so, cool, thank you. So we also wish to thank our ad hoc committee, Jim Webb and Paul Nugent, for their dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of writing and again rewriting our standing committee's mission statement, goals, and objectives. So this, these were accepted at our meeting, or at least we're going to be passing them on to, to the board. But we got useful input from the community members that were attending that helped us to fine-tune the mission statement, goals, and objectives. And those will also be printed at the, be available at the district website if you'd like to take a look at them. What was also recommended, by the way, one of the things that was suggested by President Pearson is that, that the mission statement and objectives of the board, of the RNI Committee, we have oversight over that, but the goals of the committee should ultimately be described by the Board of Directors. So we'll be pursuing that in the future. And what was also recommended, we, Ms. Dean and I had a meeting with President Pearson in early October, and this is about doing an asset management study of everything that is owned by the district, and that's determining the value of, like I said, everything the district owns when it was bought, the current value, depreciation, the remaining life. Obviously, this is a daunting task, and we'd rather not lay that on our staff, who is somewhat just up to their eyeballs, so to speak. Perhaps we could hire an intern, maybe a student at Cal Poly, or two students at Cal Poly, and once Tyler N. Code has been installed, perhaps we could start pursuing this particular project. So that's, that's what I have to report from the RNI Committee. And now let's move on to...
Vice President?
Oh, yes. Excuse me, Director Rice?
Thank you, thank you for your report. I, I think it's incredibly important that not only the goals, but the mission and the objectives of the committee be approved by the board so that the board has a chance to make sure that the committee is providing the kind of support the board is looking for. And, and it may be the case that that's exactly what the revised mission and objectives provide. But I haven't seen them, and so I think that it's important that we maintain the hierarchy, because we are new at these committees, and we need to make sure that we're not creating busy work for folks to do, and we're also, we're also providing the board itself with the kinds of, the kinds of support that it's looking for in terms of, in terms of the detail. I'm very thankful to hear about the study on the last 40 years of water use. I know that, that, that the little teeny tiny town of LA added over a million people, and their water use did not increase, not even a gallon. So I think there's something to be said for conservation. In the 70s, we were using six gallons per flush toilets. Those are not, those have not been legal to purchase new in this state for many, many years. In fact, I don't think you can get one that's over 1.8 in this state without breaking the law. So I think that part of that isn't just the conscientiousness, which our town is, I don't want to minimize the importance of that, the conscientiousness of the community, both with their, hopefully, ziriscaping and their, and their drought tolerant plants that, that deer don't like to eat, hopefully, but also in their indoor water use. But there's some savings that have happened partly due to technology becoming more available and actually required by the state. So I'm, I'm thankful, I'm looking forward to seeing what that report looks.
Yes. Oh, yes, Karen. Karen Dean, the Vice Chair of the Resources and Infrastructure Committee.
On the mission statement, goals, and objectives, we did move to present that to the board for review for next month's agenda. The other thing is, we also formed an ad hoc committee consisting of myself, Tom Gray, and Paul Nugent to work with Mr. O'Grane on the urban water management plan, and we'll be meeting with Mr. O'Grane in the next week or so, I think. We also moved to present that water demand report to the board at the next meeting as well. And I want to thank Tom Gray for his excellent job of writing this report up. We had four different versions of it throughout the time, adding and taking things away. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
I'm glad you chose to step up to the microphone, Vice Chair Dean. Thank you so much. Vice Chair Dean has been on the committee for a long time. Yours truly just stepped into his role, so that's why Ms. Dean is more on top of things than I am. Moving forward, other liaison reports. And I think first off, how about an NCAC report from...
To do that?
No, no problem. Don't worry about a thing.
I think we better skip that one for the moment. I'll give you a, a combined one next, next time.
Not, not to worry. I think all of us are kind of, someone commented with about our free time in very more eloquent tones, I think it was, well, anyway, not to worry. Yes.
So, there was something really important that happened that I think we should get on the record.
Oh, please.
And that was the scheduling of the NCAC Christmas party. Which we were, we were the beneficiaries of being able to use Bruce Barnes, Bruce Black's facility for this year as we did last year. So just as a lighthearted thing, that was, that executed an important piece of work.
Thank you. And who's invited? All right, just, just checking. Thank you. So I'll just make a couple of brief reports. First off, from, these kind of overlap in some ways. First off, from the friends at the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve, they had a meeting, and they approved paying the CCST, the district, $7,000, which was half of the costs of cleaning up the homeless encampments on the ranch. Various figures had been bandied about in the past, but this is what our Carlos Mendoza...
Facilities.
Facilities and resources, thank you. This was the number that he ultimately came up with. Also, FF RP approved the hiring of James Allen, who is an urban forest manager from Santa Cruz, and he's going to have, they're going to have him assess the results of the forest clearing work done on the ranch by Cal Fire. And in case anyone is curious, as far as my notes are, apparently this project was approved by the FF RP Board mainly to prevent the further construction of homeless encampments as well as lessen the potential for fire. The report from the Forest Committee expressed serious concern with regard to the severe removal of the understory that could ultimately affect the overall health and well-being of the forest and its natural ecosystems. And I think that, I just want to comment on Mr. Jeff Walters bringing this issue up in his public comment. Thank you so much for that, Jeff. And maybe that we still need to fire, hire this, I'm getting back to the Forest Committee, still need to hire a forest manager to defend the conservation easement, so. So that's, those are my reports. Now we shall... Yes?
I just, as we were talking about the forest, there was just something I wanted to mention. I don't know how many people from the committee might have had the opportunity to see this, but there was a special that was done by NOVA that was put out on PBS, and it was called "The Mega Fire." And I got a copy of the CD from Amazon, and I would very much suggest that anyone who's interested in some of the things that created and led to and occurred during the process of the campfire in Northern California, take a look at it. My intent in getting the copy was to have each of the board members have a chance to take a look at the CD. And what I would really like to be able to do too is potentially have a town hall down line for the community to come and take a look if they haven't already either gone out and gotten a copy for themselves off of Amazon, or if, and if you have Amazon Prime, it may even be available for streaming, but I'm not sure about that. But my, one of my, my purposes in mentioning this is that there was quite a bit of information at the end of this that was put up by the U.S. Forest Service that had to do with the maintenance of the forest in terms of forest fires and the studies that they've done over the years. And they, they actually had indicated that the kind of underbrush or undercover removal that we've experienced is something that comes back in a reasonably short period of time, and the only time that it becomes a real detriment... time, and the only time that it becomes a real detriment is that if it's something that's done on a yearly basis. So there's some very interesting information that's part of that, and I would very much recommend to anyone to take a look at that, at that particular program. Director Howell, you have the CD right now, I don't know whether you've had an opportunity to take a look at it yet.
I've started it, I'm about three quarters of the way through, and then I got kind of horrified and said, well, I'll wait and try again. But I do highly recommend it. It's, the beginning's a tad dramatic and a little scary, but once you get through that, there's really lots of good information regarding just how fires work, some very interesting stuff that I didn't realize, so I think it's probably well worth it, you know, for folks to look at.
Thank you.
And it may be available for streaming, I'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll get you your DVD back soon.
I just want to say you might want to go to pbs.org and just go to their website and see if NOVA programs are just available to, to watch on your TV or your computer.
Yeah, that's where I found it initially.
Right.
It was just cheaper on Amazon.
Right. And Director Rice, just curious, do you happen to have a liaison report from the San Simeon CSD?
I, I don't, but I do have a report to make on the ad hoc permitting committee. There's been no movement yet, but we are going to be meeting with Mr. O'Grane, and by we, I mean President Pearson and myself, and, and Mr. Carmel will also be in attendance in preparation for having a meeting with coastal staff, with the goal of figuring out how, what we need to make sure is done, so that we can get on to the Planning Commission agenda, because that's the beginning of the process. I think everybody's generally of the, of the assumption that we're going to have to deal with an appeal from whatever decision the Planning Commission makes to the Board of Supervisors, that'll then be another hearing, another public hearing for the, for the community to give their input, and the Board of Supervisors to make a decision, after which we sort of accept that there will probably be an appeal to the Coastal Commission, because that's ultimately who governs the, our development in this area. So, and all of that takes time, and we have to go through each step, and each step provides opportunity for the public to give their input and to provide their information on, their, their opinions and their, the facts that they've gathered, so that we have a very thorough process. But we need to get moving at the county level, and so that's kind of where we are, we're working at that, we're working on that. We haven't gotten there yet, but that's what we're working on right now.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Director Rice, once again, for giving us an update, so to speak, and bringing people up to speed as to how things are moving forward with the CDP. Obviously, the next, let's say the next two, three, four years of the future of Cambria are going to be seriously important as we move into the 21st century. Moving forward to item six, the consent, by the way, we are, we are moving forward, it's not even four o'clock. Yes, General Manager Weigold.
I was just going to request a five-minute break.
A five-minute break it is, so we will return. Clock in the rear there at 4:02. Thank you very much. We just had some able assistants, by the way, from Richard Green from HEP Video advising a couple of members of the board as to how to use the microphones in the most efficient way possible, so thank you so much. All right, moving forward, we're almost finished. Consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything from consent agenda, or we just want to approve it? Yes, Director Rice.
I just have a quick comment on, I think it's D, I don't have my agenda up because I don't have.
Purchase of the truck.
Yes, I just have a quick comment.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to be pulled, I just want to make a comment.
All right.
Should I do that now?
Yes, thank you.
I just would like to register that we should be looking at whether or not some of our vehicles, even the trucks, if there are alternative fuel options, or possibly even, dare I say, electric, so that we are acting in accordance with the realities of climate change and reducing our overall carbon footprint. I acknowledge and recognize, right now, we can't really afford to take the time and/or money that that might entail, but I just wanted to register that we need to be keeping our eye, especially when we purchase larger items like vehicles, that we should need to keep our eye on keeping our carbon footprint low, or, or trying to reduce it if possible.
Thank you, Director Rice.
One comment, please.
Yes, Director Steidel.
I just wanted to make a comment regarding the agenda, item 6C, which is one of the consent agenda items, and make note that the, the dollar value of this is something that the GM could have just gone ahead and gone forward with. It isn't something that needed to be brought to the board. The fact that that action was taken for visibility and for full disclosure of information to the community, I want to commend he and the staff for doing that, because I do think it makes a significant difference in the way that the community perceives the actions that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Howell?
Well, I second what Director Steidel said, I do appreciate that. There is a question that I, it hadn't occurred to me, but was brought forward to me from the public. Are these, clearly, we can see that Perry Ford is the most, is the cheapest, but are all of the quotes absolutely equivalent in terms of the accessories and the warranties? Are they actually all the same, or? And I'm having a little problem with that, because I'm having a little trouble interpreting the, the documents here. Can anyone enlighten me on that?
I, I can't, I'm not in a position to answer that question, but John Alchen's been working at real detail, trying to find the best deal that he can, and the accessories aren't the driver as much as the cost and availability.
So, so what we're, what I'm hearing is that what John has determined is that, that for the least money still gives him precisely what it is that he's not doing without something in order to make it less.
That'd be correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can we take a vote? Ms. Dodson.
Director Rice?
Aye.
Director Steidel?
Aye.
Director Howell?
Aye.
Vice President Farmer?
Aye. Now we move forward to the final item, and that's future agenda items. And actually, there's one item after that will be adjourned to closed session, excuse me. So any future agenda items that any members of the board would like to suggest? Yes, Director Rice?
I would like, I would like to have the, the Policy Committee report, the two lists of the inventory of policies that we have, and the list of the CSDA, that essentially that same report, I would like that as an action item, so the board, because while we may not want the committee to cherry pick which policies and what order they go in, the board certainly may want to take a look at that prioritization, and I would like to have that discussion.
All right, and I think as, as you suggested earlier, that from the Resources and Infrastructure Committee, that we forward the mission statement, goals, and objectives for the board to also take an overview, take a look at, and, and hopefully approve of. So, I know I had something else for future agenda items. We'll pass that. All right, so it looks as if we're about to adjourn this meeting, so seeing, oh, I was, well, I'm, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and then adjourn to closed session and ask for public comment, so thank you so much. So this meeting is adjourned, and we're now going to go to closed session. Do we have any public comment on the items on closed session? Seeing none, the enthusiasm for the items on closed session is underwhelming, so thank you so much for attending today and for the comments and public comment during the meeting. Thank you.
The closed session is agenda item eight.
Oh, yes, closed session, thank you. Legal counsel, thank you so much. Should I mention what those are, by the way? Should I describe what these items are?
No, but the Brown Act does make you identify the, the number on the agenda.
Thank you. Item number eight.